I would like to honor. Barry, if you'll lead us in prayer. I'm gonna ask everybody to go on in and sit and launch.
Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done. On earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. For thine is the kingdom, the power, and the glory forever. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in
And Nick, I did that since Mr. Goss said at some point we can get sued, so all of us don't get sued.
It does hurt.
Took thirty seconds for him to finish that.
Want to go down row?
All right, we'll do a roll call. Randy Rentsch. Beau Barton.
Here.
Melinda Ballard here. Barry Glass. Maria Bass here. Gary Castles. Johnny Fallon here.
Uh, Executive Committee. Sales tax were up for the month of June by four point five percent. Yearly, we're sitting at an increase over last year of four point two nine percent in our sales taxes so far. We're doing good. All the checks were in order. The, uh, now I would like to recognize Tanya Green as Employee of the Month.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I, again, it's, uh, it's an honor to stand before you and get to brag on someone. I just had the pleasure of believing, but let me tell you a little bit about Ms. Tanya. Ms. Tanya comes to work early and stays late, and what a wonderful quality. She always lends a helping hand and is very knowledgeable about policies and procedures. She's worked for Caldwell Parish Schools for over twenty years, and she's continued to drive from the Monroe-Stirlington area daily throughout her career because of her dedication to the parish. Working with her students is Ms. Green's passion, and she works tirelessly to ensure the outcomes of all activities she's involved in results in improved student well-being. Her commitment leads her to long work hours outside of the workday, including weekends. Tanya has an expansive knowledge of policies, procedures, and the law, Mr. Goss has had to do that, that she uses to guide discussions and make plans for her students. Her love for the students and families of Caldwell Parish shines in everything that she does. So I present to you your July twenty twenty three Caldwell Parish School Board employee, Ms. Tanya Green, for her dedication and commitment to your community, your schools, and your students, proudly sponsored by Taylor Sons Insurance and Financial Services. Ms. Tanya Green.
Thanks for like a thirty minutes.
Well, this means so much to me, and I wouldn't be where I am without the support of all the administrators and leaders that I work with and the wonderful coworkers that I've worked with for this to be starting year twenty seven. So y'all are my home away from home. I love all of you. I love the families that are here. It's a special place to, to work, and I'm blessed to be able to do something that I really enjoy and love, so I really appreciate this. Thank you.
All right, we need to approve the minutes for the, uh, said, June eighth regular meeting, June twelfth, Executive Committee meeting, the June twentieth Policy Committee meeting, June twenty seventh Executive Committee meeting, and the June twenty eighth Policy Committee meeting. I'll make a move. We accept the, uh... You got a second?
I said.
All the third? Well, actually, Ren, we, we're gonna have to review, uh, the Policy Committee, uh, recommendations. Isn't that in there? Review and vote on?
Yeah.
ENF.
Okay. Well, I'm assuming everybody already know what the changes are, right?
We're willing to discuss them when we get to ENF. That's, uh, they're highlighted. And you can talk for the, you know, for me.
You wanna go ahead and review that? You wanna go ahead and do that? Right now, we'd like to recognize Phil Shaw, the LATA president.
How are you guys? First of all, first of all, I'd like to thank Mr. McCann and, and the board for allowing me the opportunity tonight to make this presentation. Appreciate the support you guys give the coaches and the, the sports staff at these schools that make sure they have what they need to be successful. As you said, my name is Phil Shaw. I'm currently the president-elect of the Louisiana Athletic Trainers Association. And so, uh, as an LATA, we've made significant strides in some legislative efforts over the last several years to make sure that all the student athletes within the state are, are being able to practice and play in the safest environment possible. Over the last couple of years, due to those legislative efforts, we've seen Louisiana move from forty-seventh in the nation in safe sports policy as high as fifth. Currently, we're in tenth, but with the, the current legislation session that just passed and some of the, the law that we had enacted at that session, we think we're gonna be back in the top five here pretty quick. Some of the highlights of those legislative efforts was the passage of the Remy Hidalgo Act in twenty twenty. And, and what that says is that, that requires that schools have, uh, emergency action plans in place. It requires that they review those emergency action plans annually, and they discuss those with the stakeholders. It also requires that, uh, they have coaches training, an annual educational piece to where those coaches are trained in sports safety policy and that kind of stuff. And then also, uh, here this past year, we had Senate Bill twelve that was passed. And what that requires, that requires every educational institution to have an, uh, an aide, that you're an automated external refurbulator on campus, and it has to be present at all sponsored athletic events. And so, one thing I, I try to get across with that is that's not just your high school football games. That's going to be your middle schools. That's going to be your basketball games, your baseball games, and that kind of stuff. So, uh, so we, we really feel strongly that the legislative efforts that we've really worked hard on over the past few, few years has made a difference for the practice, uh, or to make the practice arm a little safer for our student athletes. The reason I'm here tonight is I, I'm coming to present a piece of equipment to James Wells and Caldwell Parish High School that falls directly in line with some of the Remy Hidalgo Act bylaws that passed in twenty twenty. One of those is, some of you may remember, we used to use, uh, heat index to determine, you know, outside environment, that kind of stuff, through research. Now, uh, a more accurate representation of that is using a wet bulb globe thermometer. Those wet bulb globe thermometers run about six hundred dollars apiece. However, it gives us a truer gauge of what our athletes are truly practicing in. And so, uh, with that, uh, at this time, I'd like to present James with a wet bulb thermometer and a tripod that those coaches at, at Caldwell Parish will be able to utilize. This is completely portable. It can be used at any athletic event and that kind of stuff. This presentation is made possible through the National Federation of High School Sports, the LHSAA, and the LATA. So James, hope this, hope this piece of equipment will help your coaches make sure that their athletes are as safe as possible. And then the last thing I want to bring up, through this last list, state of, uh, efforts. We were able to get athletic trainers added to the Rural Loan Repayment Program. Now, what does that mean? Basically, Caldwell Parish would fall into that rural, uh, community. And so, uh, it allows athletic trainers to be reimbursed up to thirty thousand dollars a year if they choose to work in a rural parish, uh, at a high school. So, uh, we're hoping that by getting athletic trainers added to that policy, to that bill, that it may entice some athletic trainers to go and work in some rural communities. In some of these communities who don't have athletic trainers there on a daily basis to take care of their students. And so, uh, that can, they can renew that for three years, up to three years. So, uh, I know when I was coming out of school, I had some school loans. I'd have loved to been able to get thirty thousand dollars a year to help repay those. So, uh, so again, my name's Phil Shaw. If there's anything, I live in Monroe. If there's anything I can do to help you guys in the future, James has all my contact information. I'd be more than willing to, to meet with anybody that you want to meet with and, and share any information I have in regards to that. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, now we needed to review and discuss the, uh, and vote on the proposed revision to the Student Dress Code. I believe all of y'all should have a copy of the revisions on that.
Barry, do you want to talk on this?
Yeah.
Basically tried to highlight in yellow the items we discussed.
What we did, uh, I think it's been, what, twenty thirteen, ten, twelve years since the policy has been looked at. To all the principals who participated, uh, you guys did a good job. You were able to do a lot of persuasion, uh, you know, to the board. For those who didn't, uh, participate, uh, I think I, along with the committed elected, to allow them to be able to give their input, uh, pretty much come up with this policy, which, uh, we haven't done in the past. Times have changed. They felt like these were things that they could execute at their school. It could hopefully minimize some of the problems that they've been having. So, uh, Nick, if you want to go off into detail on the specifics, what we changed, if we need to discuss it, we can, but this needs to be done tonight because we had to give them sixty day notice, which we, we did. And, uh, I think it's, it's fair. May or may not agree with it, but it's fair because you guys are the ones that have to execute it. And, uh, I'm willing to give that respect. So on behalf of what we've done, I'm gonna recommend that before you even read it because it's something that you guys felt like you could do so. Given that, Mr. McCann, if you don't mind, just give them a specific fact.
All right, so in yellow, um, of course, the first part just, um, outlines that students, the school boards require students to wear a school uniform to school. It consists of a solid red colored shirt, solid white colored shirt, or solid navy colored shirt, no sleeve lifts, um, and that's the same. Any khaki, tan, um, not white, navy. The change we'd like to make is to add denim blue jeans to the regular dress code policy. And then that would be for the bottoms. And then, so as you move down to number two, it outlines that bottoms shall be khaki or tan, not white or light, navy or denim. So you still have the khaki, you still have the navy. You're just adding the denim blue jeans on a, a regular school day. Um, the other adjustment that we looked at is, um, in number three, to make sure that for those khaki, navy, or denim blue jeans, no holes or rips are allowed. At one point, we had talked about, um, as long as they didn't show skin. That was too hard to police, and so just no holes and rips are allowed. Um, the other, um, item that we looked at, and this sparked a lot of debate, is number seven. And we, we felt pretty good with the consensus we came up with. It said sweaters, sweatshirts, or hoodies in the following colors may be worn over a uniform shirt. Solid red, white, royal blue, navy, gray, or black. Logos must be three by three inches or less and shall not include any profanity or obscene languages or gestures. So if you have like a Nike check or an Under Armour, as long as it's three by three and it's not mass, massive. A lot of discussion was held over whether they should be camouflage or allow anything, and we reasoned that, like, keep it, keep it solid and, um, and plain. Jackets of choice may be worn, provided the jacket buttons are zips completely. That's always been the way it was. I think there was just something else in there that we took. I can't remember what it was, wasn't anything major. And then on the back page, um, number seven, belts are encouraged but not required as long as undergarments or skin is not visible. And so, um, this was a, a big, you know, source of, um, I guess since COVID, you know, just kind of we, we, we got lax on making kids tuck your shirt tails in and wear belts and felt like there weren't really enough problems. There weren't really hardly any problems with that, and you just deal with that on a regular basis. But, um, it, um, definitely from the teachers we talked to, it encouraged teacher and student relations because you're not constantly harping on, "Tuck your shirt in, put your belt on, tuck your shirt in." And so, um, those were the things that we, as of, when we met with the committee, decided would be, um, reasonable adjustments to the dress code. Right, right. Oh, yeah, okay, and so we took off shirts must be tucked in.
Do we have any discussion on this?
I think I have a question about like the sweater, sweatshirts. If it's a spirit, like shirt, like junior high, high school sport, can the logo be bigger than the three by thirty?
What did y'all?
I don't know, like a regular day, not a spirit.
Yeah.
Well, yeah, the logo was the three inches. Now, we did leave room for you guys to have flexibility with regards to what you felt you could do at your school. So it's.
It didn't matter, okay, so do we need to add that on here?
I wouldn't put it in there.
So, um, we could, you just want to put any, um, Caldwell logo.
This one Caldwell.
Any of your kind.
Caldwell or any of the elementary.
Good, any school logo is allowed.
Permissible.
Is permissible. Is that good with y'all?
It's good.
Any school logo. Yeah, any Caldwell, thank you. Any Caldwell.
Alan Kater, Kater. Remember, most of the problems were, we felt, junior high and high school. This is something that you guys feel that you can do at your school and it'll minimize the problem that you've been having, right? Okay, and that was the basis for the policy itself because they were having... Well, each school will have different problems.
Right.
And it, it appeared that the high school and the junior high had different sets of problems, same rules, but different sets of problems. So what we did was try to put everything on an equal level so the enforcement could be the same. Hopefully, the goal was to prevent kids from being sent home. Other issues that, that they may have been having in the past. So hopefully, now moving forward, uh, the issues that they were having. And, and again, this is a trial until December. So if, if we don't have too many issues, we'll move forward. But if you have too many issues, then we'll just come back. We won't change it then because we have to go until the following school year. But hopefully, uh, you guys won't have the issue that you've been having, and, uh, you can have a smoother school, you can focus more on the education aspect versus measuring, you know, pants and, uh, still. And I think we committed, the committed did, that when you guys have your school day with your faculty, we don't have a problem coming there to make sure that everybody understands and that everybody's on board. Because if they're not on board, you're gonna still have the same problem that you've had in the past. So if, if we can't get all sections of the school to get on board, we're gonna have the same problems. And I've said that I expect kids to be kids, and I expect adults to be adults, and that's inside of the classroom. So if teachers have a problem, they need to go to the respective supervisor and deal with that and go through the chain of command. So hopefully, this will be approved. I'm still deciding whether I want to vote yes because I have an issue, but I'm okay with it because I'm, I'm trusting you guys, uh, to do, you know, what you can do, and we help wherever we can. So, uh, you want to do the, uh, employee at the same time? Otherwise, I wouldn't recommend.
Did y'all put anything in there about length?
I was looking for that, yeah. What did we decide, what did we talk about length? Shorts, yes.
Right now, I think it's four, I think it's four inches. But I think you were gonna put boys, they go, because I think it was just under girls.
Right.
Okay, so that was the school policy, and that's what we ran into is with elementary kids, the length of your shorts is a little different than when you get to junior high and high school. And so I thought we left the conversation that in the school policy in your handbook, it was going to be absolutely.
That's where the flexibility came in for each individual principal to decide what's appropriate at their school.
Yes, so in the, like, for example, I don't just say, because I know people are watching, but like at the, at the high school, um, girl shorts and boy shorts will need to be at least.
Four inches.
Four inches above the knee, from the center of the knee.
And Nick, I think one of the other problems that we need to address is that in the high school, you had first, second, third, fourth, fifth, and sixth, where a kid may go from first, second, and third and not get caught until the fourth period, which it was no fault of anybody, uh, you know, from the previous periods. It just so happened that they got caught then. So this hopefully should eliminate, uh, those issues from, you know, taking place or should minimize its significance because I think the board can attest, all issues are issues, but some of them are too miniature to deal with. And, uh, I don't have a problem dealing with it, I don't think anybody else does, but I think if you go through the appropriate chain of command, some of this can be eliminated, and the headaches that we're having and the gray hairs that we're receiving will kind of, you know, minimize. And that's saying jokingly, but it's factual. Some things don't need to come here, or they need to go through the chain of command before they get to us. So I'm ready to recommend this policy, uh, for twenty twenty-two, well, twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four school year, uh, based on participation from the faculty and, uh, the policy committee unanimously. Ren, you got your jeans in.
I need to get a second.
I'll do a second.
Are you making motion, Barry?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor? All right, now we have, uh, the employee dress code.
Which, there was no preferential treatment given, uh, to employees over students. We looked at the policy and made the changes that we felt were necessary. I think there was a, some consensus on the leggings, jeggs, or whatever you call it. I think they look good, but, uh, when they're worn appropriately. But nevertheless, again, we expect adults to be adults and kids to be kids. And I don't think you should have a policy for adults when they should have the understanding of what's, what's appropriate and what's not. But Nick, you can go with the changes.
There, there were some gray area, and so we were just trying to tighten this up a little bit. The, the big change, of course, we didn't change any of the leggings because it says here they're to be worn as outer clo- not as outer clothing, not as outer clothing. So if, and the rule of thumb is if you can't wear the dress without the leggings, then you don't wear the leggings. It, it's meant to be worn like in colder weather with boots and your dress, you know, so. But we did look at number four. This needed some tightening up. Skirts and dresses two inches above the kneecap are allowed. This is for adults. Dressy walking shorts or Bermuda shorts are allowed only if worn with dress shoes and sandals and a dressy blouse. And so that way, you know, kind of the style for some are, um, you know, like dressy shorts, but you want to make sure that they're worn as a complete outfit and that you look professional. Number six, on designated jean days, jeans with holes or rips are not allowed. So we're not gonna allow those for adults either. And then on the next page, we added caps, hats, visors, and head covering shall not be worn on campus during this school day unless in designated areas. If you're coaching a sport and you're outside at the field or if you're in the welding shop, but, um, it got kind of lax where we were wearing hats, caps, and baseball caps in the school building while teaching. And so that was females. Males, uh, number three, no denim jeans. Jogging suits, suits, or shorts are allowed. That had been left out of the previous policy.
Real quick, as a coach, I'm looking at that, knowing if I'm in the gym, I can't wear shorts.
Yes.
It's designated areas.
In, okay. We can add unless.
Yeah, we discussed that.
We did discuss it. We talked about it.
Yeah, and coaches, as long, yeah.
No denim jeans, jogging shoes, or shorts. Mind to reword that because I didn't, the unless needs to be shorts. Shorts may, do y'all, they wear jogging pants too?
I think it's, they should be to wear athletic apparel.
I mean, to me, if I walk in the gym with a pair of slacks and a dress shirt on, I'm not a PE teacher.
So I'm just gonna say PE teachers may wear, um, athletic attire, including shorts while performing their PE responsibilities. Does that sound good?
And then again, I think the principal already has that discretion to determine, you know, what's appropriate and what's not. And again, we, we'll have plenty of time to decide whether it's working or whether it's not working because again, you know, the goal was to make it feasible for everybody.
But if it's your designated area, you need a baseball cap or something.
This, yeah, okay. Shorts, um, okay, PE teachers may wear athletic clothing, including shorts, while teaching PE. Is that what you wanted to say? All right, and then six, um, same thing as with the females, uh, no holes or rips in jeans. And then the caps, hats, visors, and head coverings. That way, it's consistent with males and females. And those are the only things.
We did some with the tennis shoes.
We took them away.
We took them away. We took it out.
It did say no tennis shoes, and we decided to take that out.
We gotta get rid of that.
Yeah, yeah, we did. It did say no tennis shoes, and, and we agreed that we would give them tennis shoes, just not with the dressy shorts, you know.
You still have to dress.
Yeah, y'all, okay, because it is, it's mostly junior high and high school. You okay with it?
All right, do we have a motion to accept this or?
I make a motion to accept, thankfully, dress code changes.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, we're down to.
Oh, oh, Brandon, and we did discuss, uh, and I need to make sure that everybody understands, the, uh, the dress down day, or the free day, or whatever you want to call it, or, uh, the donations and stuff like that. I think you guys can, rather than go over tonight, because I don't want it to be an issue on the streets, just make sure that everybody understands what we talked about and how you guys are gonna go forward, making sure that everybody has the opportunity to play a role. We're not trying to give it away, but if you can, fine. If you can't, there's no penalty, uh, you know, regarding that.
All right, um, finance update, David?
Okay, I'll be very brief. Uh, we're still closing out the books for fiscal year twenty-three. Uh, I have no numbers to report at this time, and, uh, I know y'all question the budget. Uh, we probably got about half of it, uh, for next year somewhat, uh, lined it out as far as savings. Uh, that was kind of the easy part. The hard part is the remaining half, so we're, we're still working on that as well.
So David, where, where are we on the, uh, the previous months?
Just under twenty-three.
Yeah.
Uh, we're probably still looking at nine hundred thousand.
When you guys met, have you been able to chop down, take away, decide, or determine, you know, where we, where we at, what we need to do, what we need to?
Uh, partially, but, but, I mean, that's the half that was the easy part. So now, now we're to the hard part.
We, we met with the finance committee twice, and, um, at the first meeting, they, uh, tried, challenged me to meet with all departments and see if all departments could make cuts, and so we did. We met with all departments to look at where we could shave costs, and that's where he's getting that half number. Um, whereas places where departments could increase revenue and where we could decrease the revenue, so, um, we're working on it.
And we're still looking at things, and that's the reason just really I haven't presented anything, but still, I want to have everything on the road so we can show you exactly what we're looking at. Uh, so far, we've, we've, you know, they've come up with, with, um, well over half a million dollars in savings this year. So, uh, but it's still, it's still a process and we're still looking at.
Did we determine how we got there?
Through not.
Well, you, I want, I want to ask Nick, yeah, but, but, but we don't, we don't want to go into it tonight. I just want to make sure, because you can't correct a mistake if you don't know what the issue was. So I just want to make sure that we look at, uh, how we got there and prevent it and move forward. Because, you know, there are some unforeseen things, you know, that, you know, has existed, and that's expected. Uh, I think, uh, I don't, do, do departments have budgets?
But they have budgets. Uh, there's really not a whole lot of extra money in there. I mean, once you pull out salaries, I mean, there's so little items that are in there to play with that, but yes, they do have budgets.
Yeah, I guess what I'm getting at, if, if, if Mr. Wells has got a hundred thousand dollar budget, if he's in D seven, he spent fifty thousand dollars. Then at some point, there needs to be some checks and balances, and when you get to that point, I think everything that happens from that point on, the superintendent needs to be the person to make sure that it's something that's needed. Because when you get to ninety thousand and you got, you know, three or four months left, you know, that can. So that's why I'm just kind of asking to make sure that if we're there, uh, if, if we can kind of get that to, because I don't want to police it.
I understand.
Yeah. And I don't think we need to. I just think there need to be checks and balances because the public need to know that we're doing what we're doing based on the, the, uh, obligation we have as an elected official to make sure that everybody's on the same page. So it's, it's no finger pointing, it's just if we can get to where we can get to.
David, you said you had started some on next year's budget.
Right.
When was this pre, this fiscal year that we're talking about now, when was that approved?
It was approved September seventeenth or September fourteenth.
September board meeting.
Yep.
So would this one be approved?
About the same time.
About the same time.
Yep, September board meeting. So I say September, uh, you, depends on how the month falls. I mean, if it's September eighth, that's really pushing it to get it, to get it approved. I think last year we did have a special meeting.
Okay, so one of, one of the things I would like to see, I don't know about the, the rest of my constituents here, but one of the things I would like to see is I have no idea what we spent our money on.
Okay.
I mean, I'm talking itemized stuff. Something caused us to be nine hundred thousand is the figure you used. Why? Because I, I don't know if any of us can answer that question. Why? Was it a tractor? Was it paper? What, 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 what did we spend too much money on that this September seventeenth budget did not include?
Yeah, we had buses, that was two hundred and fifty thousand, that was originally not a bus.
She bought those buses when?
Uh, December.
December of this year?
Yes, twenty-two, yeah.
Twenty-two?
Six, six months ago.
And they weren't on the seventeen, September?
They were not on the September board, right.
That's the kind of stuff I'd like to, like, put that down there, on paper, so we can see it, not just, because when I leave here, I'm gonna go work seventy-two hours down yonder and I'm gonna forget it. So if you can put it on paper, I can come back and say, yep, we spent this much money on buses. Y'all leave the man alone. He spent this much money on this. Okay, here it is. It's on black and white paper. That would help me and I'm sure everybody out, when somebody corners you at Brooks or Groceries or something, say, hey, this is what happened, this is what went on. I mean, that's, that's how I feel about it. I can't speak for everybody.
I think that's true.
Okay.
Now they're asking. Another one?
Yep.
All right, uh, district leaders.
Great. Kristi, I'll start you on front row.
It's been a long week. Um, I don't really have a whole lot. Um, we're waiting on test scores. The grades three through eight should be back, they said, the last week of July. We shall see. They didn't get sent back that day. So either the last week of July or the first week of August, we should have scores back and we'll start, go through all of that for accountability purposes. Um, I've got a CTE advisory committee meeting next week. Y'all are more than invited, more than welcome to come. Um, it'll be the nineteenth at Title One Building and then, um, it just basically, I just have to go over what we're doing in CTE and, um, what our plans are for the year, kind of what programs we have, that kind of stuff. Um, but y'all are more than welcome to come.
Where's it gonna be at?
At the Title One Building, Ms. Wildy's office.
Is that the one you're supposed to remind me? Because I wish to.
And what exactly is CTE?
Um, career and technical education.
Thank you. Ms. Wells?
Uh, since we're talking about buses, uh, we've got two new buses. Hopefully, they'll be on the line, uh, beginning of the school.
We already bought them?
The board voted to buy two a year.
So that'd be a problem for next year's budget. Thank you.
So, uh, they're, they're finishing up the decal and all and everything, so hopefully we'll have those, uh, before school starts. Um, we're taking care of all of our schools, uh, every day, getting, uh, ACs charged up, ready to go. Uh, refrigerators, freezers, ready to go for cafeteria. Uh, Ms. Russell, I'm not gonna steal your, your, under here on your new, uh, got a new tilt skillet there for the high school. We gotta get that installed. Uh, but one of the big projects I've got going on right now is with energy. Uh, our schools are very dark on the outside. Uh, so I had an engineer with energy come down. We went to every school. We looked at every power pole and every pre-existing light. They are gonna come in and completely restore, install new and take off the old and put new on at every school. So the schools are fixing to get a lot brighter.
And when there was the LED, right?
These will be LEDs.
And no cost?
As no cost to us. Energy comes in and does that.
James, can you, uh, can you go ahead and discuss, uh, so those who need to hear can hear it about, uh, the delay of them being able to go inside of the classroom because of cleaning, kind of give them an update on where they at? And, and the reason why I'm asking, because I don't think it's fair to the teacher who's gonna be moved from one school to the other, gotta move everything from one place to another. I don't want them to give up their something. I don't want them to have to be rushed into their classroom to get it fixed. So just tell them, uh, you know, basically where they at, what school may be, uh, in place. Because I've had numerous, and I don't understand why they don't feel comfortable asking you guys and they have to ask me. And I, I still see that as a problem of, of breakdown of communication with, uh, whoever it is. I don't, I don't know why. Uh, I have a, a reason to believe why. But if you just go and address that, that, what school is where they at and what percentage, so they can get in their classroom and do what they need to do.
Uh, Columbia Elementary is finished.
Okay, so teachers in Columbia can go?
As far as I know, I mean, that's up to them.
That's up to the principal.
Well, what, what I'm saying is if they're moving from Grayson to Columbia, or whatever school, they go into a whole new environment. They should have the, the option or the right to go in their classroom and get adjusted. I, I don't want them to just be pushed in there because there's already disagreement. So I want to try to make this transition as smooth as possible. I think oftentimes, we, us, take stuff for granted. Well, it's not fair to those teachers. They already dealing with whatever. Give them the opportunity to go in the classroom, get the classroom decorated, get accustomed to it, and hopefully it'll be smoother than what the projection is.
Yeah, again, Columbia Elementary, to my knowledge, is completed. Uh, Grayson Elementary, Elementary should have been finished either today or will be finished by the first of next week. Uh, Union Central is a little bit behind, but they should be finished up by next week.
The twenty-sixth, you said, right? Twenty, twenty-sixth, twenty-third, you said?
No, nineteenth, twentieth. Next week is the nineteenth, twentieth.
Uh, the junior high, I think they're just about done, but theirs probably will push into that, that next, the last week of July.
No, I think it's gonna be done.
Oh, it's gonna be done?
Yeah, they had all the classrooms done, and he is waxing the, um, office this weekend and the hallways next week. So by the end of the week, they'll be in, but we just got rid of summer camp.
We had to get rid of summer camp.
So when they finish that week, when will those teachers be able to go in the classroom?
So I, I'll let them know they can come in the twenty-second.
Oh, you've already done it? Okay, that's good. Can each principal do that?
Yes, they have already.
But she was working about usually, they're really putting on.
If they have these teachers that contacted me, mustn't get the memo, so I don't know.
Well, this is, this one just got done, so the other ones.
Well, I know Grayson, she's already posted in the group meeting, and, uh, so has Columbia, and so has Union Central, so. If they're in the group meeting, they're in the faculty.
Right, because remember, they're going from a place that they've been at to a place that they don't want to go. So all I'm trying to do is smooth this transition to try to help with something that I didn't agree with, to make sure that everybody get on board. Otherwise, we're gonna have the chaos that we had before we did this.
Yeah, their belongings have been moved. We coordinated and shout out to the sheriff's office, um, the trustees and coordinated, and they came in and they worked very diligently on moving, very strategically. Uh, the things at Columbia Miller Elementary that went to Grayson and the things at Grayson that went back to Columbia Elementary. And, uh, everything was labeled and moved, and, um, there were some teachers that chose to take things home, uh, which is fine. Uh, but everything that was labeled was moved and it was placed in their room, so, um, that's been done.
Let, let me make it simple. As long as they have ample amount of time to get in their classroom, that should be simple.
I noticed, I noticed the trustees moving things into Grayson a few weeks ago.
Yeah, they worked.
Shout out to them for.
And trustees were helping wax, yeah.
That's correct.
Because we couldn't have done it without them.
The high school, the, 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 the sheriff's department is allowing those to come in under supervision. Uh, so the high school is always gonna be the firmest behind because summer school, you can't use trustees in the building when they got kids in there, so. They really don't get started until July.
I applaud that, but I'll be happy when they can get in the classroom.
Oh, yeah, yeah, and it's a stressor for the principals too, for the teachers not to be able to get in. So, um, you know, summer school does take a big portion of the time and, uh, like the junior high. Uh, but we were able to get the rest of summer school materials moved yesterday, so that that front hallway, so Mr. Higgins could go in and finish.
My summer job for ten years used to be cleaning and waxing those floors. I know exactly what you're talking about again. If we can just give them ample time, I'm done with it.
Do you want to come back? Want to spend some time?
If, if, if that's gonna help them have a smooth transition.
I can't tell you how many classrooms I painted in my day. Teacher, I painted a lot of classrooms.
Absolutely. Uh, Sandra, can you?
Um, well, I didn't have anything, but since Coach Wells mentioned the tilt skillet, I'm not supposed to be spending any money. Um, that was a grant. I did get a grant, uh, twenty thousand dollars for the tilt skillet, and it was very much needed at the high school, so.
How about your breakfast?
Hey, as long as Mr. Can't put it down, you're okay. Don't worry about it.
So tell them what you're doing with breakfast in high school.
Oh, we, um, purchased, I didn't, I, it's another fund, uh, purchased a breakfast cart. And so we will have a mobile breakfast set up for the high school kids. That, and it's, you know, it's real eye-catching and, and everything, so we're hoping that will entice them to grab a breakfast.
Because everyone eats free.
Because their numbers are so low.
Everyone eats free, but you only get reimbursed for the plates that you serve. So the, the mission here is what can we do to get high school students to eat breakfast? And so this is kind of make it look like a convenience store where you can grab a couple things, whatever is required, and do that at the door, so.
It was delivered Monday, I believe. I was out of town, but, um, hopefully next week we'll get it set up and get to look at it. I'm excited. Yeah.
Do elementary teachers still, like, ask that morning who's eaten and make a record of it and send it to the cafeteria? The cafeteria prepares. Is that how that still works?
Most elementary kids just, they just go to.
And now that everyone's free, everybody, everybody gets a plate.
So every elementary kid is charged for food then?
Only if they go in and eat it.
But they're not charged. Everybody's free.
Everybody's.
Okay, I don't mean charged. I mean, we get reimbursed for.
For every plate.
And that changed this year too. No, no, if they don't eat, I get nothing.
So we need them to get a plate?
Yes.
So wouldn't it be simple to just, when they get off the bus, let them go straight to the cafeteria?
That's what we try.
And, and so elementary, and of course, pre-K, their percentage is great, head start's great, elementaries are good. Junior high is because they focus, funnel them all in there. The trick was how do you get high school kids who drive to go all the way down to the cafeteria? Which is why we purchased that cart to try to entice them to grab a breakfast.
So when they grab a breakfast, you just mark their name off?
They have a pad, they keep that number. It's electronic. So we are, this year, should be doing better financially, um, also, because eh, in the past, I was not able to get a hundred percent funding for every kid that went through, and this year, our numbers were high enough. So every child that goes through, I get the full ream, reimbursement for. So, and that's, it's like seven percent is what I was not getting funded for, and that doesn't sound like a lot, but when you add it up, it, it, it really is. So that should help, um, a lot too.
Well, um, I'm not gonna steal any of Ms. Grurio's thunder, but, um, summer camp was a huge success once again. Um, we weren't real sure about intervention and how that was gonna go, and I'll let her speak to that. Um, but it was, it was great. And, uh, we're offering a boot camp next week for those who didn't meet the thirty-hour, uh, requirement. And, uh, it was just sixteen kids, and, uh, so we're, um, filling that gap. Um, we're getting, we're busy getting into buildings and getting into rooms, and, um, teachers are very excited. Um, they're coming together, and we've had all of our family nights at each elementary school welcoming the new parents in, and they were all a huge success. Um, and everybody was happy. Um, I've seen the excitement in teachers, uh, for curriculum and team building, and, um, it's been really refreshing. So, uh, we have a new reading curriculum coming, and that training's coming soon, and they're excited about that. Uh, but Ms. Grurio has a lot of exciting news for you about, um, the intervention piece and the growth with our students. So we have big plans moving forward, uh, with the next school year, and I'm super excited, super excited.
Thank you.
Um, we have sixty-four kids ready to come to Kelly, and that's the most we hope this point in the year. Seventeen are retiring, but our big push in May, which was three-year-olds, and so it is shocking. And we did a three-year-old search as far as a push so that if they were identified, we had time before they were actually extended to get them through that evaluation process, which in turn counts them, and the MFP dollars went both ways at all. So, um, sixty-four three-year-olds, sixty-nine four-year-olds, so they're almost neck and neck. But we have the, um, screening in two weeks for four-year-olds, and that's where you'll see all the new ones coming in, huge. So, um, we're excited about that. The, uh, teachers have a new tier-one curriculum they're being trained on. Um, the Family Engagement Grant, I think I told you about a hundred thousand dollars, and it's between August and December, so there'll be a lot happening fast with that. Um, it's just a lot going on, getting everybody staffed in new buildings, and they're, they're excited, ready to give a year ago. So we're really excited about those numbers there.
All right, Ms. Grurio?
I'll have, you know me, I always have half my doubts.
I'll have, you know me, I always have handouts. I'm sorry. But I want to say first that this has been an absolute joy of mine. You can tell that I love working with literacy. On the first page, you're gonna have three different handouts. On the first page, it shows at the end of the year goals. We set one at the district level, and I'm just gonna kind of go over it with you. We wanted sixty-one point six percent of our kids to be at benchmark or not. You have to have in mind that this year we went K to six, and in the past, we only did K to two. Because I know Mr. Rens asked about what about the other kids in third through six that are not on reading level? What are you gonna do? So this was the year that we hit fourth through sixth grade, I mean, third, third through sixth there. But we did go to fifty-five percent. So we did show a growth of thirteen point three percent of our kids. So we were excited about that growth when we were looking at that big grade span. Our elementary schools, I remember sitting in the kitchen here, and we told the principals, we want you to set a goal. Now, you gotta think about their baseline. The baseline is where they were at the beginning of the year. Columbia Elementary was at fifty-one point two. So with the new principal, Ms. Kilpatrick, I said, let's, you know, let's shoot for six, and she's like, phew, that's a lot. And so Ms. Adams, I just said, she said, okay, if y'all think we can do it, we'll do it. They increased and surpassed their goal to sixty-two point four percent of those kids, K to five, were on grade level or above. Grayson Elementary also, her baseline was thirty-five point six, that was reading at grade level. Well, she set a goal for fifty percent. She also beat that goal by four tenths of a percent. So they did grow K to six, okay, to five. And then Union Central, their baseline was thirty-one point four. She set a goal for forty percent, and she beat that by forty-one point three percent. So each elementary school reached their goal.
Why was her goal set lower than the other two?
Because it had a percentage because where they came from. They were at thirty-one point five. Yeah, their baseline. But this year, we're working and, and moving toward them getting more, and it was looking at K to five. And implementing that new program in fifth grade. So that was their growth. And so do you see, most of them hit that almost ten percent growth. The next page is what Ms. Adams was talking about, was our summer school. You gotta understand that the kids that came to summer school, they received intense intervention for fifteen days, two hours a day. So these kids, what you're looking at right here is the growth those kids made. In those fifteen days, each group, each grade level increased their goal and eat all the components of the dibbles that we give or the cadence that we gave at the end of the year and the end of the year compared to end of summer school. At the bottom, it shows the overall, how many grew. And we had kids that were well below and not reading on grade level. We had fifteen kids move to on grade level or above in those fifteen days of instruction.
Fifteen out of how many?
Fifteen out of fifteen.
Fifteen out of, you had fifty-seven regular ed and eighteen sped. So even though these others did not get to grade, to benchmark or above, they grew in every component. If you'll look at the accuracy, because we noticed as we were testing, kids were just not guessing anymore. Because if they see a G, they'll say giraffe, or goat, or whatever. Now they were slowing down in actually reading that word and decoding that word. Because we look at accuracy over how fast you can read. So that's, this gives us a start on what we need to do this coming year. And we noticed that the kids, because they were grouped within the level, they're working at the same level, they were helping each other. They were cheering each other and encouraging each other. So the things that we learned from this summer camp is what we're talking about enforcing into our school year coming in this year. And so we saw great gains, and we're excited about that. And the last page is something I wanted to show you. This shows our literacy data starting in 2019. What you see in green was at the end of the year, reading on level. Look at 2019. Look at 2020. And then you look at 2021 and 22. But those red were, that's, the greens are on level, and that was just K to two. But when you look at this year, we looked at K to six, and we had fifty-five percent of those kids. So it wasn't that much of a decrease. It was an eight percent decrease. But it was because we included grades three, four, five, and six. So we have a lot of work to do, but we're excited about the gains that we've had. And we give all the praise to the teachers, to the principals, and everyone that was involved in this. A lot of good work went into it.
It wired a lot this year.
Yeah. All right, Michael?
I guess the biggest news is we were able to fill the vacant position that I left out of. Mr. Brian Lamb will be taking over as the systems administrator for the district. Excited about having him here because he's got a wealth of knowledge in, in a lot of areas that I didn't have. So we're taking, also, we're taking all the Chromebooks next week. We'll be looking at how many students will be in each school so we can divide those up to give each student a good working Chromebook, and there'll be extras there in case teachers need broken, need to replace broken devices as they come in. We're inventorying all the Chromebooks, all of the laptops, and making sure all the teachers have the devices they need when the school starts, school year starts. So that's our biggest project right now.
Thank you.
So Nick, where are we on the restructuring program? Because I hadn't heard any information since we pretty much, so can you kind of give those who've been asking me, where are we at, what, what we need to do, and how we, how we're gonna? Because I think, one, of course, yesterday, have we, what was the times? And I, I think I remember during the phase one, two, and three, there were some times given. Has that, have that changed or what's established?
The earliest drop-off will be seven oh five, and so all of your elementary schools will be open for drop-off at seven oh five. Start times, we need to communicate those schedules to, to make sure that, that they're there. And then the end times. Ordered the bus tags yesterday, the color-coded bus tags today. We discussed it yesterday. They're ordered today to make sure that all students have, you know, their name, their bus driver, what color bus they're supposed to go on, to make sure we get everybody to the right locations and communicate that.
And Mr. Wells is doing the tagging.
The tagging of the buses, so that everything's color-coded. Okay, those, they're in three waves, and so then you know which ones are on the blue buses, the yellow buses, and the red buses. We are, we ran into a hiccup with the Grayson drop-off. You know, wanted to come out onto that one sixty-five, and DOTD shot that down. Said no to entering on a four lane, so we're having to rethink that. But we drove out and looked at maybe trying to take a loop through the front corner of Grayson, left, the left-hand side there, that kind of hooks up to a sidewalk so that we can cover that sidewalk and have them there and still keep without losing any parking. So we're looking at that. Not sure what we're gonna be able to do with Central. We may not be able to have that separated by, because DOTD came and looked at that, and they don't like the entrance anyway because it's in the curb. And so we've got to work with them on that, and so I don't know that any changes are made before school starts. Teachers, I mean, you're filling holes and, and, you know, teachers are ready to go. I mean, the excitement, I feel, is, is there.
There's no changes that may happen before school starts?
Like what?
I'm, I'm saying what you just said about the driveways and stuff.
Grayson will be done. It has to be done because Grayson is, is a problem. Union Central's not a major issue. It's just something I wanted to do. But now that DOTD has said that about the entrance, we've got to...
So we have the capability of moving forward without...
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
Without addressing either one of these driveway problems?
We will address Grayson's. It will be done. It will be done.
Before school starts?
Before school starts, yes. Central may not, but Central's is okay because they have enough for three roads, for three lanes.
So, so again, so we'll all be on the same page. Let's remember that we had people that were not for this. So we have to be mindful that you're gonna have to do a lot of selling and a lot of maybe getting on your knees or whatever to get, because we need everybody to buy in. If they don't, you're gonna have a problem that we was trying to prevent. So I'm hoping that the administrators will take their time and understand, even if there's somebody that may disagree, just listen to them. You don't have to debate them, but understand where they're coming from and try to move them forward because otherwise, we're back to square one.
Which is what a lot of the open, I call it open house, but it was the family get-together, the opportunity for the families that are moving into the, the new school and the new environment. A very relaxed environment, fun for the kids, but it gave them the opportunity to meet the faces of the faculty and the administration and us, and to have questions and, and to feel...
But you are aware that there were some, or there are some that may have been afraid to talk, voice their concerns. So what I'm saying is, extra effort must be put forward by you guys to make sure that they understand, even if they disagree with what you're saying, because we need them to buy into this. If they don't, we have the same problem that we tried to eliminate. So I guess I'm repeating the same thing over again. We need people to be mindful that everybody don't agree. And because they don't agree, it doesn't mean that they should be scolded, belittled, put down, talked to, or whatever, condescended. That's not something that's conducive to the people that's working. I want them, even though they disagree, just like me, I'm buying into it. They still should have a right to voice their opinion and their concern, and you guys should be willing to listen to that, is what I'm getting at. Because I think we've pushed too many people away that we can bring in by not listening to them. So hopefully, it'll go.
We've had many conversations about the importance of building relationships with new people, with old people, and making sure that everyone feels welcomed and valued. And I will assure you that every leader is communicating that to teachers as well, and I mean, we're, we're gonna make this work.
Because you have the implementation dip that's taking place now, where things go down, but you have to get them to buy in in order for it to lift up. So again...
We're gonna surprise you all and we're not gonna...
Well, I'm, I'm rooting for it to, to do what the intention was. I think you can serve that purpose better by including rather than excluding. And I'm hoping that we're doing more including than excluding.
We've actually used those words.
Well, that's good, because I know you and I talk about it. And I, and I believe that you're doing what you're supposed to do, and I'm hoping that everybody under you is doing what they're supposed to do.
All right, at this point, we're, we're going to need a motion and to either enter into executive session to discuss the demands by Mr. Shaw and any action that the board may, may need to recount. Somebody give us a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session.
Do I have a second on that?
I'll second it.
Do we need a real call vote?
Yeah.
Take some two-thirds votes in.
Two-thirds vote. Put in the two-thirds vote.
Mr. Barton?
Yes.
Ms. Fowler?
No.
And Mr. Glass?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Bass?
Yes.
Ms. Fallon?
No.
Mr. Rens?
Yes.
It's gorgeous. Happy weekend. Happy weekend.
John, you're breaking him in real good.
Yeah, he'll probably say, "I'm not going back where..."
We're back on.
I don't know, that place he went before us sounded pretty bad.
Kaylee, just might tell Kaylee Tom.
One thing you did say, you don't ever do the same thing twice.
We were in the kitchen. I said, "I think I heard a door open." We wait on security. Kaylee, she's coming.
She's getting ready to pack, isn't she?
She was grabbing the stick.
At least our stomachs won't be great.
That's a good friend, Bill McMillan, the biggest supporter of...
Really? I guess it's his son, right?
On a round of big sessions, we're gonna need a motion to resolve the resolution that we'll discuss in executive session or something.
Do you need me to do that, Mr. Guys? But I'm gonna let you do it, because I want to say what I want to say.
I make a motion that we take up our attorney's recommendation to resolve this situation.
Second it will have. You say, all in favor? Do we need a roll call?
No.
All right. That brings us to...
He's headed home right now.
If we get to the super pit report...
That is, this is where we're at.
This is it. Kaylee put a copy of the PD schedule, it's hot off the presses, we finished it today. So she tried to star the ones that you would benefit from coming to, because you can earn your hours here. So we have our speaker, Jim Van Allen, he works with the John Gordon Companies. And so the energy buzz is our big push this year, transforming district culture. He'll be a great speaker, so that's a good one to come to. Our nurses are doing a stop the bleed, as well as a Narpen administration and opioid awareness for all employees. And so that's another good one. And what else to start? Tools for teaching, anytime that Carly Amos is doing this, it's on classroom management and how to set teachers up for success. That'd be another good session. And then, so that's Thursday, Friday, and then Tuesday, Michael is going to do a Google Security session for all employees about maintaining security with your Google apps. And then after that, John's on to do the legal updates.
We're here now because I've told all school board, "Don't send me anything in Google."
So anyway, so that takes place August 3rd, 4th, and then 8th, and then school will start. So that's all I have. Let me get everything on this cover. I'm on vacation next week, so...
If you can, please do a concerted effort to minimize one of these cases with a tennis court. Find somebody that can be a coach.
Yeah, Vicky Crocker, the new name. Yeah, I had not heard that one. And if you know of any...
I don't know, but I know the kids, they deserve it.
I agree. I make a motion to enter.
Second.